Hey Tim, can you hear me?
Yes, again, can you hear me?
Okay, I think part of the problem is there's a different meeting ID code on the agenda than there is on the email you sent out. So I tried to email one first. And now I'm on the one that was on the agenda.
I sent, I sent two, I sent a replacement one yesterday, or a Friday afternoon.
Okay, I guess I did notice they were different.
The original one I made, for some reason, as soon as I clicked save, it defaulted to the last day of the month. I don't know why. So we caught that one and then I had to make another one. So, but I think I accidentally emailed that old link to, Kate just told me I sent that to Matt and her. I must have forwarded the wrong email.
That's the one I used too originally.
Yeah, Zoom was being funky. I couldn't sign in earlier this week. It was frozen out. Keaton had to try and get it to work. It was all a mess. So hopefully everybody can get back in. I the other problem was too, my laptop wasn't working. So I started on the, my tablet and I tried to switch and I think it threw everybody off. Cause Deb Haves is still missing and, and Chuck or Ron was on.
Can you hear me now, Tim?
Yes, I can.
Tim, can you hear? Okay, I'll unmute, I'll unmute, thank, I'm unmute, thank you.
Oh yeah, we're missing Kevin. Well.
Yeah, Kevin was on and, and Ron was on and Deb was on. We're just waiting for those three.
One, two.
Come back.
I ended up logging in through the link that was on the
On the website?
The website calendar, yeah.
Yeah, cause that, the one that was on the agenda was right.
Okay, we'll give it a few minutes.
And unfortunately I didn't bring my contacts list. Do you have that?
I do have a contact list. I have last year's.
Do you have Deb Haves' phone number on there?
No, she's not on my contact list.
I can email, I can email her.
We're missing Dave too. Dave was logged on before, I think, right?
He was on, yeah, he was. Yeah.
Okay, we'll give it a few minutes. We don't have
Yeah, and even if, we could start to talk about some things while I try to work this out in the background too, but we'll, we'll give it a few minutes first.
Okay.
Actually, I have a question. Now, this is Wes. There's a new jeweler that's in kind of between where Marty's is and North, North Keighoga. It's got a red sign up there, like a temporary sign.
Yes. Yeah, it's just, he's getting an awning. He just put that up there for a week or two.
Well, it's been up there for a while. It looks like crap, but I mean, the sign's just ridiculous what's put up there, but so he's gonna, he's coming in for an awning sometime in the next three or four months?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Nope, it froze up for a second. Yeah, he came in for an awning permit. It's being produced. So he just put that up there in the meantime until the awning comes in.
Okay, alright.
So that should, he was supposed to have it this week, but I don't know, they got delayed or something.
That sign's been there for a couple of months anyway.
Yeah.
But he might, he, he might not have to come before the board, right? Isn't that?
He won't have to. That's, and that's the reason.
That's an administrative one, as long as he meets all the
Yeah.
Okay, but I mean, even a, even a temporary sign should at least kind of fit the space up there. This looks like, you know, it could have
Administrative review.
Sign's supposed to go. It just doesn't look good up there. Anyway, that's
Yeah, no, that's not his final sign. He just applied for a temporary sign permit. Which is technically only good for a couple of weeks, you know.
Okay, well then, then it should be down because it's been more than two weeks.
Yeah, yeah. That's just We've been lenient with some people during this COVID stuff with signage, but you know.
The temporary signs actually have a longer, uh, per the code.
A couple of months maybe?
Yeah, I think it's like 90 days or something.
Yeah, it's nine, it's 90, but I don't remember when he got it. He did get it at least a month ago. Okay, he's not at nine, he's not at 90 yet.
Okay, and even the front of that building, I think, three owners ago, we've been telling them to repaint it up there and it's always the winter and they say they can't do it. But ideally, I guess this awning will cover up the crappy facade.
Yeah, that'll, it's gonna go the whole length of the building. It's gonna be just like the other one. They just took it down. They're using the same frame and they're gonna recover it.
Okay.
So it'll be red, they'll stay Anastasi Jewellers.
Okay.
Does anyone have a way of contacting Deb? See if she can get back on.
Deb just emailed and I just sent her the link.
Yep, she's just got on, she's on. So now we just need Ron. And Kevin, Ron and Kevin.
We need Ron and Kevin.
So I sent out an email right now. Hopefully they get it. If I would have had my list, it's in the office. I could have called him.
I'll try calling Kevin. I know I have, because I probably have Ron too.
Hey, Tim?
Yeah.
Can you send an email, that email to Dave Sutton?
I guess I can. It should be the same link, but let me forward it to him too.
Because I'm, I'm on a link that Matt sent me.
Yeah. That should be the latest one. I'll forward it to him right now.
Put it to you right now, Dave. Yeah. On the line.
I can, I can hear him, yeah.
Okay, Tim can hear you. Oh, it's just one big party.
That's right.
Stay there. Happy New Year.
Same to you, how are you? I think I missed your birthday, didn't I?
Yes, yes, that's no, not a problem. Oh gosh, I know it. I got my shot last week.
Did you?
Yeah, my, my first one, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh.
That's great.
Yeah.
It's a relief probably, right? Although it doesn't really count for much because Ashley got her shot.
Yeah.
And someone in her office came down with a virus and she's gotta go get tested tomorrow.
Oh gosh, I hope she doesn't have it.
Can you ask, can you ask him what his email address is? Cause it's not saved in my tablet.
Okay.
It's design, I think it's Design To Build. Is that what it is?
Yes. Dave S.
At DesignToBuild.com.
Can you hear that, Tim?
Yep, Design Number Two Build.
Correct.
Okay, it'll be out shortly. Alright, he should be getting it soon.
Okay, tell me when you get it.
Alright, Ron's in, so we're just waiting for Kevin.
We're waiting for Kevin.
Okay, as long as you're not waiting for me.
Yeah.
Technical difficulties.
You got the email.
Good. Yep, I see him.
You're in.
Perfect. Great, thank you.
Okay, sure. Thanks, Tim.
Right, so as soon as we get Kevin, we're good to go.
Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, Deb.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, Deb.
Yep, you too.
Happy New
Happy New Year, Deb, Chuck Razzoni.
Hi Chuck, Happy New Year to you.
Thank you.
Happy New Year from Larry Z.
Hi Larry, Happy New Year to you.
You're helping me figure out how to work all these buttons. Thank you.
Tim, Kevin said he's logging in.
Yep, I see him right now. Yep.
Alright, perfect.
Should be good. Sorry about that, everybody.
Life in a Zoom world.
I guess so.
Better than having to go out in the, in the snow and cold.
Yeah, I guess so.
Well, well, on that note, I get to tell you that with the release of the orange and yellow zones, we can return to in-person meetings. If that's a desired platform for people. Or we can go to that sort of hybrid thing we were, we were trying to do there in the fall. Where, you know, the, the board might meet in person and then they have the big screen and everyone's watching sort of remotely and that kind of thing.
I would definitely be open to meeting in person. I can always use a night out of my house.
I would prefer in person too, but I don't have a vote.
I guess, Larry, what would you prefer?
I'm in for personal meeting.
Okay, Wes?
I think we could meet in person. I'd prefer not to have everyone else there. Maybe they can meet, the petitioners could be remotely, but as far as the board, I think that's okay.
Yeah, I think we'd still
What anybody wants.
Yeah, we still probably would have the television because in case we get a case that needs a lot of people. You know, one or two petitioners may be fine, but if you have a group, we definitely would have to have them zoom in.
Okay, Wally, are you on board with that? Is that okay?
Yeah, I'm fine with it. I assume the room would be set up appropriately.
Yes.
Yeah.
I prefer
Ron, you good?
Continuing online myself.
I'm okay with it.
Okay. Okay, Chuck, how do you feel about that? Chuck, you're on mute.
I got, I'm waiting for my second shot in February. Sure, I should be okay for March. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm the oldest guy here.
You're fine.
Okay, so that would be it. If I could get the second shot, I'd be much more comfortable. I should get it in the middle of February, so I'm hoping.
Okay, well then I would think we can plan for the next meeting. If we have somebody on the March agenda, we can, we can meet in person and have the TV.
We do have somebody on the agenda and then we'll probably have, well, we may have Dave's application also depending on how it goes tonight, so.
Okay, sounds good. Alright, so Tim, do you want to fill us in just a little bit on our one agenda item for tonight as far as the Irishman?
Yep, so I mean, I'll have Dave present it, but basically they want to do an extended outdoor seating patio on the left side of the building. As you can see in the drawing I sent out. You know, basically per my code review and then talking with Sutton, I think the main issue we're gonna have is just parking issue that we have to discuss. No, but we have to see how we want to take it and we'll have to get Chip to chime in a little bit on that. But I'll let Dave present. Still, he's the better one to say what he would like to do.
Tim, you broke up a little bit, at least as, as far as my hearing.
Yep, it may be, it just told me my connection's unstable.
Yeah, you were cutting in and out. Can you repeat what you said about that?
That's okay. Yep, basically the, the main part of it is, I think we'll
You're still cutting out.
He's completely frozen now.
He's frozen, Tim, you're frozen.
To discuss a parking issue. With you. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you and your video is back moving.
Sorry, my connection's spotty. I think just have Dave present it and then I'll do my code review in a minute. I'll try to move to a different spot in my house.
I, I don't know, Amy, do you want me to talk about the project now? Is this the official meeting? You're still in your pre-meeting, right? I don't want to interrupt. I'm glad to present whenever you tell me to, but because Tim was so frozen, I'm not sure when you want me to go ahead and do that.
No, we're technically in work session until 7:30, so why don't you just wait the five minutes?
Sure thing.
And we'll start the meeting. Tim's on the move.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go moving closer to my router. Alright, I'll try again. My, and the code review, basically the main thing I see us having to talk about is the parking issue. There is shared parking allowed for in the code. There's also a ZBA option, but you know, you guys can also grant waivers depending on how big they are. We may not have to go to ZBA, but that's, that's the issue we need to talk about. But like they, when Dave's ready and you guys are ready, I'd rather have him explain what he'd like to do first and then with the questions that come up, we can kind of go from there.
By code, Tim, how many parking spots should they have?
So technically, for the square footage, you need 1.5 parking spaces per thousand square feet, I think it is. So I think from my calculations, roughly they need 12.
Okay.
You know, but you know, I did talk to Dave about it yesterday or the day before, or sorry, Friday. They still do plan on closing off that area in the front in the summertime, which that's where we really get to the question in the parking. So that's, that's all we'll have to discuss. There are options and we just have to look at it.
We, we can talk about that later, but the code says that any areas used exclusively for seasonal outdoor seating shall not be counted for the purposes of calculating minimum off-street parking requirements.
I didn't, I didn't include that. I just included the buildings. You know, roughly I estimated 12 parking spaces are needed. I think they'll have eight. You know, and that wasn't an exact calculation. We could have Dave supply the exact calculation on the square footage if you want to get an exact count. We roughly estimated about 12.
But during the summer, there would be four.
There'd be four, but again, like Chip's saying, I can't, 12 is the number they would, yeah, they'd be supplying for.
Okay.
Amy?
Alright.
Amy?
Yeah.
One of the questions I have, you know, it sounds like a great project, but that dumpster that's there now would be moved. There wouldn't be a dumpster if they thought about, if they, if they, as Dave talked about what they're gonna do with their garbage.
They will have a dumpster. They're just moving it forward.
Yeah, do you have a picture of the proposal, Kevin?
I do, I do.
Yeah, that dumpster, that dumpster gets moved in front of where they're proposing to have the covered bar. That's the dumpster in front of it. That's measured like 30 by 12.
Okay, and also the other question I have, they're gonna be removing like four trees there. Is that necessary? I'll have to ask Dave Sutton then.
Yeah, well, Dave will have to answer that one.
Long Creek, there's, or long where the Brightsmith is, there's four trees and I thought they might want to keep that for, you know, shade and cover over there. I don't know if it really affects anything. I don't know if they need that.
Dave can certainly answer that. I mean, if you go to Brightsmith, they have a tree growing right through their canopy. So, yeah, Dave can certainly address that. Alright, is everyone ready to get started then?
Yep, I am.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Deb, you ready?
Yes. You ready?
So, yeah, we will begin the planning board meeting for February 1st, 2021. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God,
with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We were not in sync, but we all get the point. Alright, Deb, could you please take attendance for us?
Sure.
Thanks.
Ms. Alexander?
Here.
Mr. Lester?
Here.
Mr. Pacer?
Here.
Mr. Razzle?
Here.
Mr. Stone?
Here.
Mr. Tridilio? Ron? Mr. Zasowski?
Here.
Mr. Carson?
Here.
Mr. Carson is here?
Yep.
Alrighty, Ms. Waterman Culpa?
Here.
Mr. Greco?
Here.
Mr. Masters?
Here.
Trustee Eto?
Here.
Okay, thank you very much. Dave Sutton.
Thank you, Deb.
Yeah.
Alright, first on the agenda is the approval of minutes from October 5th, 2020 meeting. Did everyone get a chance to, to look those over? I know it was a long time ago.
Motion to approve.
Oh, thank you, Kevin. Is there a second on that?
I'll second. This is Wes.
Wes second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thumbs up. Any opposed? Any concern? Okay.
Then I have to abstain from that, Amy, I'm sorry. I wasn't at that meeting.
Okay, thank you, Ron.
You're welcome.
Alright, next on the agenda is log 2021-PB-01 concerning the Irishman at 5601 Main Street. Looking for outdoor patio and alteration. We have Dave Sutton who's going to give us some information on that. Dave?
Hey, good evening. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present to you this evening. Once again, my name is Dave Sutton from Sutton Architecture. Address 5409 Main Street, of course Village of Williamsville 14221. So we're here today to present a patio expansion. And I'd like to start off the meeting at the Irishman. I'd like to start off the meeting by stating, we are not looking for any approvals this evening. We're looking for a little bit of direction. I did meet with Tim Masters. Knowing this is going to be a little bit of a unique situation, we wanted to get some input from the board and the members individually. So we can have further direction to further develop our plan. So we are not looking for any formal approvals this evening. However, we are looking for some valuable input. Just giving you a brief description of the property or the project is we're simply proposing a covered, an expansion of the existing patio at the back of the property, which means the south side of the property facing Island Park. I think the opportunity kind of came upon us by observing the success of the property next door at the Brightsmith. I think everybody can agree that the outdoor patio portion of that project really complimented not only the property, the structure, the business, but also many parts of the village altogether. And we're gonna kind of look at some of the qualities or good points that were presented or proposed over there and take advantage of them here. We're looking to expand the patio opportunity at the south part of the property with partially open air. Meaning a concrete patio, which is closest to the retaining wall along Elica Creek. And then a proposed portion, which would be covered, very similar to the front bar as well as the opportunity at the Brightsmith. And once again, if anybody is unfamiliar with the Brightsmith and you'd like further explanation, I'd be glad to do it. I thought that was a great opportunity to do a full-size mock-up right next door. So you guys can see what I was talking about. So I thought that helps a little bit. And in summary, the site plan would be once again, proposed open-air structure right up against the east portion of the block wall building of the addition that was done at the back of the Irishman. And going fully across the property to approximately, well, a minimum, we need to maintain a minimum, minimum of five feet off of the eastern property line. And that's going to be a built wall structure, which on the front of that structure, on the north side of that structure. Kevin, we would be introducing a dumpster enclosure to relocate and enclose the dumpster. So I will have all the details for that at the next meeting, Woodstockade. But included with that dumpster enclosure, we're actually gonna have a built structure for storage. We do have an opportunity to store some of the outdoor seating, equipment, tables, all that stuff that kind of comes along with these patios. So we're looking to, as you can see on the sketch that was presented or, or supplied, we have the dumpster we have the dumpster enclosure and then there's an overhead door that shows an enclosed structure that would house outdoor seating or outdoor seating equipment and stuff like that, but screened from view. And then on the south side of this wall would be actually the back bar of the outdoor bar that we're looking to propose. That bar would literally face out onto Elica Creek and Island Park. Now, we will be at the next meeting presenting all the details associated with the bar, meeting the materials, selection, stuff like that, nature of the overhang, probably going to be introducing an outdoor heating element out there. So we will have all of that information, but based on my original conversation with Tim, you know, we talked about how to interpret this with parking and some other items. I felt it best to present this more informal, get some input from you guys, assemble a good package to get back to you guys for the next meeting. So, and I think Tim was correct in stating, you know, we are proposing ultimately a total of eight parking spaces during the non-patio season, which would be reduced down to four parking spaces during the patio season. When that, when that patio permit is issued, we will be once again absorbing those four parking spaces along the north side of the property and incorporating that into the patio, much like what you've seen in years past. More than willing to address or, or follow up with any concerns regarding parking, whether it's a ZBA, whether it's an interpretation of the attorney or a planning board approval, will follow whatever direction this board, as well as Attorney Greco suggests is the best path. So that being said, the, with the exception of moving the dumpster and creating the enclosure and providing that patio in the back, we are not change, planning on changing any of the outdoor features, landscaping, exterior architectural elements of the building as part of this proposal. It's limited to this expansion of the patio. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have, but more importantly, looking for some, some good feedback and some positive input.
Dave, just a question about the actual covering. The, the Brightsmith canopy is, you know, very high and to me like very open air versus the covering at the front of the Irishman to me seems kind of like low and heavy. Do you know what I mean? It's, it's much more solid, I'll say, for lack of a better term. What is the, what is the thought of what this proposed covering would be?
Right. So the proposed covering is going to be of wood material, very similar to the Brightsmith, but definitely a lot lower. We learned a little bit from the Brightsmith. We did it more of the look. We gave it like an amphitheater kind of feel. It kind of, it fanned out and it projected up. And everything is very successful. However, we are realizing that by the height that we did to get the look, it's actually worked against us in terms of holding that supplemental heat and didn't weather the COVID opportunity of doing outdoor seating very well. So we are probably going to do a similar structure, a very light structure, wood, maybe open rafters. And once again, looking for direction, not making it look like the building, like the front one. If you, the criteria for the front was to make it look like an extension of the building, but open walls, we don't feel like we need to do that here. We want more of an open-air structure, a lot more airy, a lot lighter, more like the Brightsmith. I don't know if that answers your question properly, but I, I, I think I understand what you're getting to and that's our intent.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you.
I had a question. This is Wes. The east wall of this new proposed covering, is that going to be open or is that going to be a solid wall?
The east wall is proposed to be open.
Okay.
Okay, there is no wall. And there is a fence right on the property line, a beautiful wood fence.
Right.
Right on the property line that was part of the Brightsmith project. We're going to use that as a backdrop. We're going to take advantage of that five-foot buffer and add some landscaping and soften that, but really use that wall as our backdrop for the east property line.
Okay. And then one more question on the front where the dumpster is.
Yep.
Is there an opportunity to do something so it doesn't look like there's a dumpster hidden there? I don't know if there's a garage door. I don't know what you could do there, but so it doesn't look like you got a stockade fence hiding a dumpster or just kind of, that's what you're going to see pulling in there.
So, so your design standard, the Village of Williamsville has design standards for enclosing the dumpster. And it, as in the past, approved stockade or wood material. We would be open to doing anything to make that more decorative. Maybe we can do a stockade fence, but maybe give it a barn door look to it with a couple of extra features. That might be nice and I can pursue that. Or if you have some other ideas, maybe Kevin does, on which alternatives might be.
Well, that fence at Brightsmith is beautiful. Could you do something like that on that, on the dumpster?
For sure, for sure. I think the success of the Brightsmith fence, little bit unique. I think it's the black metal posts that interrupt the wood and the horizontal nature of the the fencing material as opposed to a traditional vertical. If you'd like, I can come up with a design that has, uses the horizontal elements and maybe some other details that would help it have a better architectural appeal. I'd be, I'd be glad to do that. And, and Wes, I, I would assume that's the direction you're heading in unless you had some other ideas. I don't think we want to enclose this structure with an overhead door because now you get into how do you get this dumpster out?
Right.
And you don't want to enclose it for other reasons in terms of fire, in terms of, you know, odor and stuff like that. So we need to leave it open air.
Okay. Hopefully maybe something would complement the fence, Brightsmith fence, or, you know, not necessarily copy it, but maybe something that would go with it or whatever.
Right, right. I wouldn't be opposed to doing, once again, like a barn-style detail and maybe use some of the color scheme of the original Irishman. So it ties more in with the architecture there, but some similarities in terms of materials to talk about the success of what is going on at the Brightsmith.
Okay. I guess kind of my thought is it'd be nice to, so it doesn't look like it's a dumpster hidden there.
Correct. Yeah. I mean, I, I agree, Wes. Sometimes, you know, we're all about enclosing the dumpsters, but sometimes the enclosure looks like we're just enclosing a dumpster and it doesn't have any thought in it. I will gladly put forth a little bit of effort and give you a view from Main Street, looking down that parking lot of some ideas that we might have for you.
Okay.
Dave, the, the original Laksmith shop about 50 years ago had interesting doors, double doors that.
Right.
That might work.
Yeah, once again, I'm not presenting this as an extension of the Brightsmith. This is the Irishman. I don't want to, I don't want to confuse the patio in the back being an extension of the Brightsmith. This is, I need to go on record stating this is an Irishman project, okay?
And just put a leprechaun, put a leprechaun on the roof, okay?
Thank you, Chuck. That sounds perfect right there.
So Dave, I have a question. The, the southern double doors right next to the bar. What are the, what are those for?
Those are going to be more of a security gate, similar to what this board and I worked out for the Brightsmith. So that we have some sense of security. We can indicate when the patio is closing. And it's going to be either, I would prefer it to be more of an open air, more of a wrought iron railing situation. Maybe a play off of the railing that's already been approved up by Main Street on the north of the property. Some black iron, a closing gate so that it can be secured. It's not meant to be doors. It's more of a security gate that'll be open during hours of operation and closed when not in business.
All right. So people will be going in and out during the course of business.
Yes.
Through that. All right. My second question is, where are the, where are the grease drums for that you usually see at the Irishman now? And it, because my concern in that back area, and I've been back there before, is that every now and then there's a spill. And it looks like it's going to be around that area where the doors are. So is there?
I, I'll check with Maria and with Gene in terms of that, but I think our intent obviously is to clean our act up and anything that's going to be storage or clutter is going to occur behind the, or within the structure. And, and I will agree to, or at least bring back to Maria and Gene that we can't store anything in front of that gate to create a visual distraction or negative, you know, that you can see from Main Street or in the parking lot or anything.
Yeah, I'm sure they wouldn't want to do that themselves. It's just that even if they had it somewhere in a large dumpster area, it's just the travel with however they transport their grease and then an eventual spill that could be dangerous for, for customers.
So what I might suggest is maybe I'll go back and take a look to see if we can expand the dumpster enclosure and actually install those grease drums within the enclosure. So they'll all be enclosed. I just want to make sure they're not going to be a problem with coordination between the dumpster and the grease drums, because obviously if this dumpster truck, the dump truck comes in and knocks over one of those grease drums, I mean, we, we've made a big mistake on that one. So I think we can do it and protect them with bollards and find a way to make sure we're covered. But I, I will come back to you with a, a clear set detail of what we're going to do with those grease dumpsters, okay?
Okay.
Dave, what is, what is behind the building right now back here?
That is the existing patio.
Is that still going to be used?
Yes, of course. Yep.
Okay. So they're using four spaces in the summer then?
That's correct.
Right, okay.
Wait, say that again. Who, using what four spaces?
See, so you'd have this spot here in the back, the new spot they'd be adding on. They close off this section here and then the existing structure here. I'm saying four. I mean, technically you can count this as one.
Oh, I thought you meant four parking spaces.
No, 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 I'm sorry.
There are, I guess, the idea is that the back, the patio we're proposing is going to be an expansion of the existing already approved patio. So I don't imagine it being two distinct areas, but they will be in a way because this is proposed to be more of a bar area. And then a seating area is the area you were referencing. Just like in the front, we have a bar area and then the seating area that are under the umbrellas. We're, we're looking to, I'm sorry.
When, when are those parking spots there in the front used?
Whenever the outdoor seating permit is not in play.
Which is November, end of November to March 15th, I believe.
Thank you.
Use that in the winter.
In the winter.
So, I mean, the only question I'm having in my mind right now is, you know, I'm looking at the definition of seasonal outdoor seating and, you know, that was added. And I'm not, you know, obviously this is, this isn't any sort of commentary on, on this. But you know, what I think was envisioned when that seasonal outdoor seating provision was added was, you know, essentially sidewalk cafe type stuff. There really wasn't any thing in place to regulate. And it's defined to be the temporary placement of removable tables and chairs. This appears to be much more permanent in nature. So I, there's just a question in my mind as to whether or not this even fits into the definition of seasonal outdoor seating. Would you be, would they be using this back area? This back bar year round? Or would they just be looking to use it during?
Those time periods that are limited.
I think, I think the answer to that might be year round, much like the Brightsmith. Now, this year is, is exceptional. It's very different than any other year. But the Brightsmith will have a Saturday afternoon where it's sunny but freezing cold. They have the camp. They have the fires out there, the radiant heaters, and they invite people to go out there and sit and have a beer and have a meal. And, and there's a lot of other towns and villages that do this, more in ski countries. So we're not looking for seasonal. I keep referring to.
Yeah, and that's why, and the reason why I raise that is I wonder if actually this is really more of a modification of a site plan issue.
Okay.
But I do think that that further complicates your parking situation potentially because, because if this is, you know, the seasonal outdoor seating does, you don't count the outdoor areas towards your parking. But if this is not seasonal outdoor seating, then you do, you would count it and it probably would create even a bigger parking deficiency for it. Doesn't mean you can't get a variance for it, but.
Correct. Now, Chip, I, I, I can agree with you and that's kind of what Tim and I were struggling with. So I really don't care how it's classified. I'd almost prefer to classify it more conservative because I'm not looking to make it seem like we're doing something sleight of hand here. Our attitude is.
And I'm not trying to suggest that, that there is anything in pro, I'm just trying to, actually, I'm not trying to suggest that you're trying to like sneak something into or, or put around.
Yeah.
Hole or a square peg in a round hole. I just want to make sure that we do, that we process this based on the reality of what it is.
So, so this is, this is a follow-up on a couple of things, one of which is obviously the code is encouraging for walkable community. We have a large municipal parking lot right next door. We are looking to create a diverse offering of dining experience. Everybody knows that in Western New York, you can go to any restaurant during a summer night and the inside is empty and the outside is full and they, and it flips. So we, yes, we're looking for this opportunity. We don't feel that it's going to add a demand to the parking. However, if it's classified that it is an increase in the parking requirement, we know that we are probably going to be deficient. So if there is a 12 parking space recover requirement and we are providing four and, and Tim changes his mind and there's a 13 parking space requirement and we provide four, I'm okay with that because our rationale is we've got 135 parking spaces within walking distance that are open to the public and available. And that's our, our thought process for this.
No, and I, I, I agree with that, David. I think you
Yep.
could have a very good argument to make, but that would be one that may have to be made to the ZBA.
Understood.
And that, I think, leads to a, a sort of procedural question of where you go next and then if that's the case.
I, Tim and I have talked about it and he said that this meeting would help him feel comfortable in the direction. I truly believe and we are, Tim and I have lined us up to be under the zoning board of appeals and hopefully by the next meeting have had that answer of either an approval or denial for the request for parking on this. The one thing I can say, and once again, this is more of a comment to the ZBA, but I think the planning board should know this. The, the Brightsmith has been open along with the Irishman and several other businesses in the village now for a year. And from our end, and Tim has concurred, that there has been no complaints filed or, or customer complaints due to the establishments regarding parking. And I, I think that's great. I really do. I think it's great that people are embracing the opportunity to get out of their car, walk a couple of blocks and go to the establishment they want. Find out that it's a two-hour wait at one place and then go to the next, one next door and have just as good of an evening.
My only comment on that is parking may be fine, but it's when people park behind the plastic surges and then cut straight across Main Street to Brightsmith. And I don't know who, who needs to work on that, but somebody's going to get clobbered one of these days.
I, I couldn't agree more. And I think, you know, it's a shame because the village spent a lot of effort and time putting in that hawk.
Right.
And I think it's an excellent feature and it's a perfect opportunity to take advantage of it. And it's unfortunate that people still take the path of least resistance and take the shortcuts.
Right.
I would be more than willing to relay back to these, to the business owners, not just the Irishman who I'm presenting tonight, but the others that are all involved to, to, to kind of have a collaborative effort to try and get people. To, to, to kind of have a collaborative effort to try and get people to use that hawk. Right. Cause it's not like you gotta walk two blocks either way. It's, you know, it's a couple three hundred feet each way. There's a light. It's not that far. I agree a hundred percent.
Maybe even some signs just coming out of that parking lot that says, please use a crosswalk. I agree. I mean, you're right between the hawk and mill with, with crosswalk galore and they still cut across me.
Yeah, and I can um, you know, not part of this application, but I could relay to. The um, Brightsmith who has the agreement with parking across the street. To maybe follow up on that a little bit and see if they can work with the landlord to get some signage up there. I'm assuming that that signage would have to be approved by. The building department and possibly even have to come in front of the traffic and safety committee or something. And maybe. Maybe it's a traffic and safety committee item that we should bring to that board meeting and look for their expertise to uh. How to establish a game plan uh, to, to kind of divert people one. What, hundred foot one way or a hundred foot the other way to utilize the resources available?
Right. Good thought.
Dave, Dave, back to the Irishman for a second.
Thank you.
Did the Irishman ever consider expanding this and moving the bar toward Main Street? Maybe taking up two more parking spaces, but then using that as additional seating? And not using the parking in the front for summer seating?
Um, the, 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 well, not necessarily looking to do that. I think the great part about the. Additional seating, we love to bring some energy and some life uh, to the street. And I think that it does that. When you drive by and you have the covered porch. With the energy that you kind of see spilling onto the street there or or visually spilling onto the street. Also, the um, umbrellas and the chairs, that's one um. Uh, uh, experience of seating where you're exposed to the main street and you see the hustle and bustle. We're trying to create a diverse opportunity and that is follow up on the kind of more private. Uh, take advantage of the view. There's so many people that don't realize there's a patio in the back of the Irishman. And opportunities to take the advantage of one of the best views of, of the eating establishments in Williamsville. Or in Western New York for that matter. So we're trying to create.
Like, instead of, instead of sitting on a busy main thoroughfare, would you rather be back against the creek?
Um, I would say there's a fifty fifty personality that would uh, say that and to me. Actually, between you and I, it depends what mood I'm in when I'm walking down the entrance to say hello to Maria. Which would, what I feel like that day. So I understand that. And I think what we want to do is we want to give that diverse. We feel as if there's gonna be one day that it's gonna be super crowded in the back and it's gonna just be a great experience. And that might be in the fall or that might be in spring. And then other times, let's say music on main. When there's so much energy right on Main Street, people are gonna want to be right up on Main Street. So we're trying to create, you know, really great. You know, full experience here. I mean, I, I appreciate you what you're saying, but I don't know that we want to take away. The, the uh, four parking spaces and then slide that bar back. I think I would rather have that bar closer to the creek because that creates a really, really neat experience. Once again, very similar to the Brightsmith um, that's right next door.
Okay.
Hey Dave?
Yes, Gavin.
I noticed that you're gonna remove the uh, existing trees. Do they have to be? Is that, are they in the way?
Yeah, I, I had heard in the pre-meeting your comment on that. I will gladly uh, take a note here and see if we can preserve any existing trees. Um, I think I would love to preserve them all, obviously, but the idea of. You know, that canopy kind of feel and stuff like that. I think you gotta walk back there and see which ones, and I'd be glad to walk it with you to determine. If really there's some quality or maybe they can be replaced. You're right, uh, Amy, we. We talked about the one at the Brightsmith and originally that was coming down after an initial meeting like this uh, that we did with you guys. We actually talked Mr. Shooty into letting us design the bar around that walnut tree. And now you should hear him. He thinks it's the greatest day in the world and he's actually named a beer after it, you know, so. So it turned out awesome and we were able to preserve the tree. I will gladly go back to uh, Jean and Maria. And see if we can preserve any of those trees and I can modify or come with explanation to the next meeting. As to what our approach is with those trees.
Okay, thanks. And Dave Shooty told me that tree was his idea, keeping it.
I'll bet he did. If I remember correctly, it was someone on this boards. It might even been Wes. I don't remember. It might have been Kate. It might have been Wes. I don't know, but it wasn't Dave Shooty's. I guarantee you that.
Amy, I have a question. So, the music on main or any, there's live bands. Well, you have, I haven't heard very much about negative comments about parking, but I have heard a lot. From the residential neighborhoods about how loud um, the Brightsmith and other outdoor. Um, facilities have been, especially with their music. So are we gonna be having competing bands back here along the water?
I have no clue on that. You'd have to talk to the village board about that because they permit that. Right? I mean, I know from my own personal experience of it, the bar at the Irishman is usually out at Main Street. I would assume if Brightsmith had a band, it would be in the back. I don't know if that's enough of a buffer for them not to compete, but I think that like Matt could maybe address that. That question for us since that goes through the village.
I mean, they get a mayor's permit for the amplified sound. I mean, it would basically be regulated through the mayor's permit. But I don't know if there's a decibel level is.
Well, there are. I mean, when those come, there's usually, they, they come in as I recall and it, you know, it's a mayor's permit that the board. Trustees essentially reviews all the, basically the site plans, you know, for, for those setups for music on main and. And there may also be decibel limits imposed in those permits, but I'm not positive of it. I don't know if Matt, you remember?
I do not. Um, I think, I think I've only really been involved in one so far. Um, and it was pretty much a, well, this is exactly what they did last year and it just, you know.
Right, yeah. Right. And that has, the way it's sort of been the last few years, they just come back in with the basically the same things. Yeah. Had been done the year before. So I don't remember exactly too, but I know there certainly was a discussion, has been a discussion. About decibel levels. Um, but whether those are actually put into the. The, the permits, I'm not sure, sitting here right now. But I do know that the, basically the, the, as I said, sort of like the site plans for where the bands are, are all reviewed and, and approved. But those have largely sort of been in the same place year after year now. But obviously Brightsmith would be new, right? Or have they, did they participate in it?
Um, no, they, that was, this would have been their first summer.
Yeah.
So I mean, we can, I'll log that away as a, a thing to think about when the next conversation comes up for. Music on main if they're doing it again this year. Um, and uh, I'll bring it up at that time.
They, they can get kind of complicated with different venues, like Brightsmith. Will also have more water, which can reflect sound differently than. Sound might go into Main Street where it's hitting cars and people and. Um, and, and it has competing noises. So I don't know that a decibel level is really. All in all, gonna be the controlling factor. And I don't know what the controlling factor is. Um, if it was my job, I might, um, I'm not saying that this is Dave's issue. I don't think it is, but if. If I was uh, when I had problems like this for uh, a band shelter, I would hire an acoustic consultant. Make sure I um, I wasn't as smart as I thought I was on acoustics. And it can get complicated.
Sure.
What, what I can say.
Design issue though. I think this is a design issue because you're.
For okay.
Are. And so what is the use of the covered bar? So you have seating, I mean, tables. And where will exterior music play? So at, across the street. At most, the bands play in the back in this very type of setup. So I think this is a design issue.
For the Irishman for this project. Okay, I see your point.
Yeah, what, what I can do is, is Kate, we can look into this a little bit. I guess I would need a little more direction, but what I can tell you. You know, on the record is that obviously we would adhere to any and all regulations associated with the music on main. Uh, decibel level, location of where the bands can occur, all of that's uh, stuff. If there's anything I can do or things that you might be able to uh, give some advice on to help um. You know, establish a guarantee or a buffering of that sound for the neighbors. Uh, I'm assuming that's Oak Grove neighbors, right? I don't, I don't think there is any other neighbors that would be. Subject to uh, noise control. I don't know. Um.
Dave, the neighbors from almost Cadman have called my house about music. Near the island. So.
Okay.
The music, that's why I'm saying now we've got two bands on the water and then take, if Creekside wants to do something. And I, and maybe it's just not music on main. I mean, I've been to the, the restaurants along Main Street where they're playing music. Not just part of that program, but at other times as well.
Okay. Yeah, I, I'm not sure if there's any advice in terms of adjustment to the design. Uh, I'd gladly take them back and reconsider them for any adjustments. Uh, otherwise I would just have to rely on, you know, whatever permitting uh, for outdoor music and enforcement through. Um, Tim Masters and his department, but I'll gladly put any enhancement in the design that you feel might be helpful to. Curb uh, noise control other than finding a way to restrict it um, through Tim's office.
I, I do think that that's an issue that needs to, it's not specific to this site design by any means, but it should be addressed through the village. Maybe Matt can take note of that because I was on Island Park and the music from Brightsmith was exceptionally loud. That perhaps there just needs to be something in the code that amplification devices cannot be directed toward a residential area. Period, right? Whether it's music on main or it's a Tuesday during the winter, right? That we're not, we're not using our business district to disturb the peace and quiet of residential neighborhood.
Amy?
Ever. Yeah.
I would check and see if the village had any phone calls. Now Kate said she got phone calls. I don't know why they're bothering her. But maybe the village did get some.
I think it was probably when her husband was the mayor, is my guess.
Right. So ma- Matt, maybe you could make a note of that and maybe that's just something to keep on the radar for. You know, when you guys are looking at code and um. You know, mixed use or if you're talking about music on main, that perhaps direction of amplification is also an issue.
Right.
Thanks.
Yeah, so there, you know, there, there's a whole prohibited noise section of the. Public order chapter of the code is, has a whole lot of stuff in it, but it also. I think has some holes in it potentially, uh.
No, not our code.
Cause they're mostly um, geared towards hours of operation. Um. Uh, you know, there's, there's no real sort of catchall necessarily. Um. That's independent of hours of operation. Uh.
My experience usually.
Except, except for this, I should say. So i- if you're, it's being done under a special permit, which music on main would be. Um. There, there is a provision that was added in two thousand twelve says create any loud noise or amplified sound associated with any activity requiring a permit. Under section seventy-three four, which, you know, mayor's permits. Outside the time periods incorporated into or otherwise in violation of such permit. And that's where that, or otherwise violations of permit. I do think some of those permits have had, could have, or if they haven't, could have. Those sorts of limitations put in it. Hey, you can't face the music, the band towards this residential, you know. That's where the sort of review of the site plans, so you know, I'm using that air quotes. Um, for, for the music on main uh, could come in. You could, you could write, the permit could specify where the band has to be set up or it could. And or specify decibel limits. And I think it's possible that they have done that in the past. Somebody would just have to go back and look at them. But to confirm whether that's the case or not, but, but, but I clearly think that authority exists under the code.
Chip, but usually isn't it just a curfew time limit?
Well, no, that's what I just said though. So yes, there's a lot of, of our card loads. The one I was just reading from. Seventy-three dash three I is. Um, lists for prohibited noises, create any loud noise or amplified sound. Associated with any activity requiring a permit pursuant to section seventy-three dash four, which would cover music on main. Outside the time periods incorporated into or otherwise in violation of such permit. If the permit has conditions that are not simply time related, but are decibel, maximum decibels. Or orientation of the speakers or whatever, those can be put in there. I mean, that's one of the nice things about mayor's permits is the mayor really acting through the whole board, but it's the mayor who signs them. Can really impose whatever reasonable conditions he, he deems appropriate.
Well, I guess, that, that's a, that's a conversation that definitely needs to be had, but I guess is. Is there anything else about the Irishman that we can let Dave go?
Larry Z, I've got a question.
Where am I?
Go ahead, Larry, you're on.
Okay, is, is there any requirements uh, as far as the dumpster being away from. Uh, tables and, you know, patrons and things of that nature? Does a dumpster have to be so far away from a building? Is there any, any of those kind of requirements involved?
Tim, do you want to answer that or do you, do you want me to try to?
I mean, I haven't, it doesn't really specify trying to go to, check part sixteen right now.
I mean, I don't think there's any New York's uniform.
There's, there's not a state guideline. You just have, you have them in good, you know, keep them up.
Right, and I think that ours.
I don't think, it just says enclosed.
Right, and, and it, it definitely regulates sort of the quality of the enclosure. And I don't think it regulates the location of the.
Yeah, I mean, they don't want it right on the street. I know that, but I don't know as far as setbacks. I think they meet that. It's kind of behind the front of the building by a ways, but being next to it, nothing specifies how close it can be to a seating area.
Okay, because I was just wondering how close that dumpster is gonna be to the scene.
Okay, so I can answer that, Larry. Um, the, the actual dumpster is on the other side of the wall. So you would not see in any way that um. You know, that dumpster associated, you know, with the, the, the covered porch for the patio. Um, so in terms of a visual connection, there would be total disconnection. You won't know that's a dumpster on the other side of that wall.
And I don't think. Smell it in July though. You're gonna smell it in August.
Yeah, well, once again, and that's more of a, a maintenance thing in terms of how often that dumpster gets emptied. And um, I don't think it has anything to do with distance. I think if it was five feet away, ten feet away or twenty feet away, if they're not paying attention to that. Um, their, their, their business is gonna hurt. So I think they're gonna make some business decisions.
And it already does smell in July at Brightsmith at certain times. You can, you can, you can smell that dumpster.
Cause I mean, where it is now, Irishman's dumpster is close to Brightsmith's outdoor seating.
Yeah.
Really, just as much as it will be once you move it forward.
But it does, do it just, just so, since we're talking about, so I pulled, I'm, I'm looking at the NMU design standard, so all really. But you know, this is significant. It says the storage and or staging of refuse shall take place in the rear yard. And shall be buffered or screened from view from parking facilities adjacent properties and all street. And then there's additional things about, you know, sort of the quality of the screen edge and the gates being closed. So are we in the rear yard here?
No, we're not.
No, we're not. And it currently, it currently is not.
Yeah, I have a vague recollection of there being a zoning board hearing for those dumpsters because they do face Main Street and there's not an awful lot you could do about that.
Right.
But clearly, an effort was made to make them as rear yard as they currently are within reason.
Right.
Moving them closer to Main Street would arguably not only obviate whatever variance have been granted, but potentially makes them even more nonconforming.
Right, I mean, this 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 property doesn't really have a rear yard. So, yeah.
So, Tim, you might want to look into this.
Barge, you know, like.
A garbage scowl.
Yeah.
Tim, Tim, you and I may want to look into this because we may need to go.
Pull it.
Well, we may need to go for two variances and based on what uh Chip just said. We may be uh expanding upon an existing nonconforming condition, meaning the location of that dumpster being closer to Main Street. And I would gladly um, you know, entertain the opportunity to talk to the ZBA about, you know, moving that in the benefit versus the detriment of that deviation. You know, from from the code. So we might just want to put it on as a ZBA discussion.
Right, okay. Matt, do you have any idea a ballpark year?
Oh, it wouldn't have been that long ago.
Not that long ago. I mean, it probably, to be honest with you, it was a it was probably related to when the banquet room was added.
Okay, I think that's, I think that's probably right.
Because I I also, at the same time, I remember there being a further conversation, and I think it came with the patio addition. Um, there was a concern about fire access.
Correct.
Yeah, I talked to that about, I talked to Tony about that. We figured we'd get a little further along here before we really evaluate that a little further, just to make sure the design didn't change.
Yeah, and and to follow up on that, that is one of the reasons, based on my conversation with Tim, is why we're doing that double gate door. It's not a single door, it's a double door for much for the same reasons we talked about from a fire access standpoint over at the Brightsmith. You know, we 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 did a lot of, we had, we did have a lot of these conversations during the Brightsmith approval process. And I felt like we benefited um and took a lot of that knowledge with us to help us design this one, so.
Dave, how tall is the wall between that dumpster facility and the bar?
Well, that wall is is once again to be determined, but our goal would be that wall would be approximately the same height as the um banquet expansion, which I believe is twelve feet, and I can confirm that actual height. That'll all be represented on on the formal application for next month.
Okay, any anybody else with any questions for Dave regarding the Irishman? No, we're all good. All right. Thanks, Dave. We look forward to uh hearing from you next month and seeing some depictions of what you've got in store.
Thank, thank you very much, everyone, for all the input. Um, well, this is a is a great opportunity for us, so thank you.
Have a good night, Dave. Thank you.
All right, you guys too.
All right, so next on the agenda, we have some code revisions and a discussion of signage from Tim.
I just had a few things to run by you. Months ago now. Well, as we went through this new sign code, we noticed things as we go along. So Chip had suggested that I bring some of these things up before the planning board, since they were involved with the rewrite process. Just to get some feedback before we recommend to the village board. So I'll try and pull some of these up here, but the main one that came up was channel letters. Now, in our code, there is a problem with the way it's worded. It's unclear whether or not channel letters were meant to be illuminated internally or not. So mostly everybody I've talked to's feelings on it are channel letters internal or halo lit, facelit or halo lit would be allowed in the MU district. I don't know what anybody remembers from this conversation or what you'd recommend, if there's any changes you think before we press along. That'd be number one, if you want to start there, whether or not we want to allow facelit channel letters and halolet channel letters as a recommendation of the.
Didn't we talk about this?
Well, the board did, meaning the village board did, I believe, and we have talked about it, although it's months now. I gotta, I gotta re you know, construct my memory as to to the various ambiguities.
Yeah, I'll pull it up.
But but I don't think, but I don't think that it was brought to the planning board.
No, that was your last recommendation. That's where we left it. You said we should probably bring it before the planning board to do a quick discussion.
Yeah, you don't happen to have my, any of those emails handy to talk about the about the issue, do you? Because I just, that was a long time ago.
Right, I can't pull your email up for everyone to see, but I can read it. And um the one talking about this one just said, I agree, there's an ambiguity in the code that should be addressed. Eighty nine dash four F authorizes channel or reverse channel lettering in districts where illumination is permitted. And illumination is permitted in the MU. The eighty four eighteen H regulating wall signs specifies external illumination in the MU only while authorizing internal or external illumination in the M one. And that's that's where we get lost here. Matt, I'm gonna pull you away just for a second. So right here, it says channel lettering or reverse channel lettering may be utilized in districts where illumination is permitted. Then if you go to the illumination chart, it just says wall signs. Um, it's different on here. I mean, basically, this, it doesn't matter. I'll find it here, but the question is whether or not the planning.
Yeah, I I mean, perhaps the easiest for for the purposes of discussion, the real question is again, it's gonna be up to the village board ultimately, but because this board reviewed and made a recommendation on this, the village board at least wanted to have, or at least I recommended they should have input from you guys before they made that decision as to whether the intent really was to allow channel lettering. Illumination of of channel lettering, whether whether that means it's shining out the back and creates a halo effect or shines shines out the front. Or um while while prohibiting sort of cabinet style internal lighting. Or whether there was an intent merely to allow uh halo type lighting, that is, channel lettering where the light is emitted out the back and and creates a halo around the solid letter.
I I think I we, didn't we have an issue with this with um uh the plaza next to uh Glen Park Tavern?
Yes, this came up for there, and that's where we noticed that there was an ambiguity.
Right, in in my, and what I, when I think I said, but when I'm thinking right now, even if it wasn't what I said then was look, a channel letter is a channel letter. It's it's not natural, it doesn't have to be illuminated. So I don't think there's anything that's saying in the code that the channel letter, it's, I know that's probably the intent, but that the channel letter gets to be illuminated. And I, and I, you know, I think we were trying to get away from illuminated channel letters and box signs, of course. So that we uh, you know, we create.
Well, I don't, you know, i- if that was the intent, I don't think, because the channel lettering was specifically authorized as an illumination, as a as a method of illumination. Section eighty four nine, which is titled illumination. Eighty nine, eighty four dash nine F says channel lettering and reverse channel lettering. So we're talking about two different things here. May be utilized in districts where illumination is permitted. The confusion comes about when in some of the sign charts where it says for illumination, it says external only. Because under the old sign code, basically before sort of channel lettering became so popular, we kind of were drawing a distinction. It was at least the practice of the board to draw a distinction a practice of the board, I should say, and the code enforcement officer and me in terms of my opinion to say, well, if it's shining out the back, that that's not really sort of the internal illumination that was prohibited. But anything shining through the face kind of was, but
but I mean, my my memory of the original sort of prohibition about internal illumination was, and this goes back a long time, right? It it goes back to the idea of the of the big box cabinet sign. You know, uh, that it's a single plane, single sheet with fluorescent tubes in it, and boom, you got this big light on it, right? And I know that then there was a move away from that internal illumination, which then got us a lot of goosenecks. And my favorite example was Muscarella's where we had goosenecks over top of a a big box. You know, cabinet that wasn't allowed to be turned on. You know, um, so then, so then I know that like, when I was still on zoning board, there were issues about this, and so then the halo channel lights started coming up, and we ended up with some of that. You know, like on the fifty five hundred Main Street, right? Good example of where it's way too bright. But so then, uh my memory of the conversations of when the sign code was being rewritten was to kind of hold on to the idea that if you're going to do channel letters and they're going to be illuminated that, like Chip said, they shouldn't be illuminated through the front. Like they shouldn't have that translucent panel. And that kind of then drops you back to the idea of the halo glowing out the back or illuminated from an external source. But, you know, how to go about clarifying that?
Well, I I I'm not too concerned about the ability to clarify it, as long as it's clear as to what we want to allow.
Right, that's what I need, just what we want.
So I mean, I guess I don't understand what the difference between a channel letter and a reverse channel letter is first.
And I ask you to go to section eighty four dash two under definitions, and both of those are specifically defined.
Oh, well, there you go.
Yeah.
So channel letter has a face and sides, but no back and out background, so it's produced halo effect.
So I I interpret that to mean basically a channel letter, the the light is emitted out the front of the face of the letter. And a reverse channel letter, the light emitted out the back.
Yeah, the reverse channel letter is a halo lit. I mean, in the in the industry, they refer to the halo lit. It's a reverse channel letter either.
And then if you go down further, external illumination is defined as you know, I don't think a channel letter regardless, either channel letter or reverse channel letter meets the definition as drafted in this code of external illumination, because that is defined as illumination by a light source located outside of the sign structure or lettering that is directed at the sign face. And internal illumination is illumination by a light source contained within the sign structure lettering. So it doesn't say anymore which directions. So I think it's fairly clear that channel lettering and reverse channel lettering are both internally illuminated signs.
Correct.
Where where the where things get where where the ambiguity arises, I think, is this I is this provision that says you can use channel lettering wherever illumination is allowed, but then we have tables that say under illumination for certain types of sign that say external only. So that is fundamentally the question is, is that something, i- is there a reason? Or I should say, just what do what do what does the village want to do with respect to to channel letter? Do you want to allow wherever illumination is allowed, will allow both types of channel letters? You only want to allow one type of channel letter where illumination is allowed or or no channel, I mean, the code allows. So that's kind of.
I personally would like to eliminate reverse lighting on them. I mean, to me, when you you get a slippery slope, because some people can do it very subtly, and some people, it looks like a modern version of a neon sign. Right?
Yeah, although keep in mind.
Regulate that.
But we don't, we know, I mean, we don't prohibit neon. I mean, and we've got a classic neon sign in the village, but so, you know, yeah, but that's all that that that's just sort of the 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 feedback, though, that the village board is looking for is as a matter of policy preference. And I've heard several different views expressed already tonight, so maybe there may be no, may not be any consensus on the.
Look, and and to me internally lit would be inside of the letter, and both reverse channel letters and channel letters have the ability to have the lights inside of the uh of the letter. Externally lit means there's a light source external to that sign that lights on it. And now I'm remembering what my issue was with um with that plaza. Um, that's the way I read it. It's it's kind of clear to me that we we did not intend for these to be lit um and have an arcade up and down Main Street. We would like things to be a little more subtle, but still work. And there's a huge difference when you light a sign from not just a gooseneck, there's many ways to do it. Um, and that's probably what we get sick of, is everybody sees the one solution and they continue using them. But internally, lighting can get very uh uh arcade-ish as we go down the line, because every business owner wants to have people to see their business when people are driving thirty five miles an hour and they only have a split second to look. And what's the best sign to do that? It would be that externally uh or internally lit channel ladder, one way or the other.
Yeah, so what you're saying, Ron, is basically that we should only allow, should be, the village only allowing channel lettering, whether front facing or or rear facing, where well, or are you saying it shouldn't be allowed at all?
Well, he's saying you would you stick with the, so it's, I'm trying to see the section here.
You can use that.
It's it's under walls. If you go under projector, not projecting signs, you go under wall signs. That's where it is.
Yeah.
But it's towards the end, it's, and it says in an MU district, it says external only, and in M one district, it says internal or external only. The problem is there's a discrepancy in the earlier sections. If you keep, if you're in keeping with this this table only, this would match what Ron's saying, external only on channel letters in the MU district and the NM.
Well, right, you know, and if that's the case, then then again, we don't need to wordsmith this thing right now. I can figure that out.
I can fix it.
I just need to know what the board, but essentially what would mean is either taking out or rewording that provision that says that says you can use channel lettering wherever you can use illuminated signs. That's what's.
That that triggers it. But yeah, so I got Ron's opinion is keep it the way this table is, external only in the NMU and the MU district.
As long as we we interpret it that way. We didn't interpret it that way with uh with that plaza.
Yeah, well, because I can't.
That was under, that was under, wh- which, what were you talking about? What sign are you talking?
No, it was next to Talbot's. It was Movement Mortgage.
Oh, yeah.
You know, Talbot's too, that Talbot's did a reverse, they did a channel, a reverse lit halo lit letter. They did the same thing. Um, but this triggered that.
Right, and then the reason why was because is because there was this ambiguity in the code. And 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 when that happens, you know, we we the ambiguity is always construed against. Is always construed against the municipality. So I just felt that we couldn't deny. It's given that there was that language that said you could use. Channel letter. I think. Now, but if we don't want that, we can change the code, but.
I would agree with Ron that we should go with external only, but I do think that in the instance of that. Movement mortgage, I believe it was, that, you know, we had said we would kind of let it slide because it's set so far back from the road as well. So it was a little bit of an anomaly as opposed to maybe something that would be more right on the sidewalk. But I do agree with Ron, we should eliminate it and just go with externally lit for those districts.
So, so where would we?
Neon signs as well?
Well, I don't know. This depends on the rest of the board feels about that. I mean, right now, what the code says about. And, you know, we really haven't had any applications, I don't think, for neon signs, but we do. Have a specific provision for neon signs. Actually, I was just looking at it. Now I. Neon signs located within a window area shall not require a sign permit provided they conform to the following. In a non-residential district, no more than one neon sign per window. Covering no more than ten percent of the window area and no more than two neon signs per use.
So that's like an open sign or something like that. It's not a business sign. Okay.
Well, it might be. I mean, the thing is, although if you do that, you know, people remember what happened with the. The, because we didn't really regulate. Window, you know, people started to put their signs on the glass because it really wasn't regulated. They didn't have to come before the planning board. And that became a whole loophole that we had to address also. And this was under the old code.
I think the taxi parlor that's up on the second floor of Roniker's building there has like a neon window sign, you know, looks, looks fine.
Yeah. Small is okay.
It's okay.
Well, you know, I mean, like I said, the liquor stores got a neon sign and it's. I- i- in in under the old N M U, you know, it's no longer the sign code, but, you know. When when we did, when when there was a signage gallery as part of that process. The neon sign was the highest rated sign. When the community preference survey that was done that time. So like many signs, it depends on the quality of the sign. You know, that just happened to be a really, really nice neon sign that was being used and it wasn't one from the village. These were just images that the consultant was using to do a community preference survey. And that was. The, as I said, the highest rated sign of all the images that were shown to the people who were rating them.
Okay, does, does anyone else have any comments regarding the channel letters? Illuminated, not illuminated?
Just also the size of them. Um, I I'm not sure how we, um, how do we dictate how big they are. Uh, how big they're allowed to be.
Yeah, so right now, according to that table on a wall sign, it's twenty percent of the facade or fifty square feet, whatever's less. Maximum height is six feet. And you're allowed one per facade.
Uh, four feet.
Uh, I'm sorry, I'm reading M one. Yeah, four feet, sorry.
And 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 Tim, how would that, you know, because I think everybody probably agrees that the one that got totally out of control. Was fifty-five hundred Main Street, the one on the far east side of the building.
That one was before my time, so actually.
No, I know. That's what I'm saying. But do you happen to know what where, how that would compare to these dimensions?
Well, I don't know, because it's all based on a building. I mean, twenty, well, fifty square feet is five. By ten. If you go that tall, I mean, most people want to make them longer, so they'll go three by.
Right.
You know, you just gotta do the calculation to get up to fifty.
Well, I would think that that sign's way bigger than fifty square feet.
Well, I mean, if it was, I forget how tall those letters are, but if they were eighteen inches, it could be up to thirty-three feet long.
Yeah, see, that's fifty square feet is big. It, the problem is it's always a case by case basis because sometimes. They just work, I don't know, fifty square feet, that's probably too big. It may be too big. I'm not sure.
That is something I think we should look at because we don't want a repeat of fifty-five hundred and. And I, and because we're just trying not to be transit road and we, that's a little piece of transit road there. And um.
I'd have to calculate that one.
Because of this setback, there's, there's, there's a, there's a reason why you would want your signage larger as a business. Owner, but um, we want, you know, we want to try to bring people into fifty-five hundred, have them walk into that sea of parking instead of. Uh, driving by, uh, if, you know, thirty-five, forty-five miles an hour and catch the glimpse. But um, I I think that's going to be important that we analyze that and see how that really comes into play. Um, are we still shooting ourselves in the foot?
Yeah, I have a memory of that one. That was predated this code and and.
It definitely did.
They came, they came to the zoning board several times. They they basically did one sign per tenant each time they did it. We kept trying to encourage them to like, come to us with a signage package to find your, your paint, your signage zones. Like, we'll grant it at one time kind of thing, but they they kept doing it one at a time. So there's probably multiple applications for that and there's multiple. Hearings for that too. Um, but it would be interesting to see, Tim, if you could pull out those applications, what the.
Yeah, I can find that.
Total square footage of that is.
Cause I mean, even though a fifty square feet seems large, I mean, that, it says whatever is smaller. So twenty percent of the facade. You don't have many buildings that are going to be huge.
I mean, right, I mean, right, fifty-five hundred's an unusual building.
Yeah, that's, that's the only other place you could probably do that is like Saint Peters and Paul's and they're never going to do anything on the building. And then that goes to HPC anyway, so I'm just trying to think of other, other huge building. The only other one you could possibly do it on would be uh Maine and Hirschfield. You know, but they split their tenants, so it's hard to say whether it would come up again.
So what happens when fifty-five hundred has a change in tenant? What are we going to be up against?
Right.
Well, yeah, I have to, again, I, I haven't had that come up a lot. The first time it's coming up now is for the Benderston project on the corner of North Alloca and Main. So it's getting a good dry run right now with that, with multiple tenant signage. Um, but Chipotle, you know, when they came to you guys, they just said what their signs were going to be the traditional small signs. So it's not an issue. I don't know what the other tenants are going to be. That's where it's going to be tested.
Yeah, four foot by twelve foot is a massive sign.
Yeah, that's pretty big. But again, I, there's, there's probably only two buildings in the village that could actually be allowed to do that.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so it sounds to me, I've only heard from two of you so far. That we want to recommend external only as the table lists here for channel letters.
Well, this is Wes. I'll agree with Amy and Ron.
Not, not for channel, but for X. So not, basically, no channel lettering.
No channel letters.
No, no internally illuminated channel lettering.
Right.
Yeah.
Cause there's, there's different styles of channel.
Are, the, they, that's what they are. They're internally illuminated sign.
But you can get a channel letter non-illuminated. That's, that's where I think me and you will have to work on. We can get, we can change the definition.
Not not illuminated, a non-illuminated channel.
Yes, because you can make, you can buy, I used to sell them in order from the sign company. You could buy a channel letter non-illuminated and just mount it.
Yeah, that, and that's, that's actually, that can be kind of tacky. Cause it can be, there's a case of that in Hamburg at a Walgreens. I'm thinking it's Main Street on Main Street. And the Walgreens has, uh, they, they had the same um restrictions. Uh, externally uh lit channel letters and it's the regular Walgreens signs just not lit. It doesn't look that great, you know? There was a different sign that should have been put there. Um, and they, and you know that Hamburg is looking for very similar sensitivity that we are. And, and you look, I, I've actually was involved in getting channel letters done in their plaza in the village. So I, you know, we got it through their code and through their zoning board, so designers and owners will do whatever they can to. To do it, um, what their client really, really wants.
You know, so, but but it is true that that on our definition, the channel letters. Both channel letter and channel letter reverse are specifically defined as an illumine, you know. As containing illumination element. So if we're, if we don't allow illuminate, internal illumination. And we kept those definitions as rare, then you couldn't put in. The non-illuminated channel because there there, it just would be something that wasn't allowed. I mean, you'd be, there's no such thing under our code.
Right.
Okay.
I I think the definition of internal illumination needs to specifically say within the channel ladder, within the body of the ladder.
It does, it does.
All right, so then that that's clear. External illumination is clear to me then that it was a light external to that. And whatever we have to do to define that clearly.
The only, the only blurb then we'd have to fix then if we want to leave the definition the same is that channel letters can be used in a zone where. Illumination can be used, because it specifically said internal or reverse.
So basically, it should just, that would say, if 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 what, what Ron and others are saying, if that's the. Consensus of this board and the, and then the village board were to agree. Essentially, that they would say channel lettering can be used, although I think this language would probably be unnecessary. Because it would already be in the charts, but basically just add the word in where internal illumination is allowed.
Right, yeah, okay. Well, we can play around with that before we recommend it to the village board. Okay, so then.
So before we leave that, I, I just wanted to, so that, but we're talking about wall sign. Are there other types of signs looking at these tables? So, because are are we saying, or is this board saying? That that is the, are there? Is that across the board, no matter what kind of sign type, or are there types of signs where? You, this board would be comfortable with channel lettering in the MU or N M U. So, so for instance, right now, ground signs, clearly, there's no ambiguity here. Ground signs in the N M U or MU. Illumination, internal or external, that would encompass channel letter. Pole sign. Says internal, so that would could encompass channel lettering.
And I'm going to change pole sign to pillar sign.
Pillar sign, right. That was also, that's another, I don't even know how that got in there. I don't know how I missed that, but um. So. Projecting says external only, so that would not include facing what we're talking about.
Well, well, hang on a second, Chip. So let's, let's back up for a second. So a ground sign. Could have. Reverse halo channel lettering mounted to it.
Mm-hmm. Or, or, or regular channel lettering mounted to it.
Yeah, well, right, exactly. But the point is, is that the internal illumination of the channel lettering could be mounted in a. And a halo projected. Or even, like you say, it could just be projected through the front of the channel letter, either way. As long as it's mounted to a, to a panel at grade.
Correct. That's the way it's, it's worded.
Right.
Now, thi- this is the next one I want to talk about, not necessarily for illumination, but. The question is, that came up with one of these was for pole signs, does that space underneath. Where it says more than four feet have to be left open?
Um, yeah, because otherwise, isn't it a monument sign?
Yeah. It effectively becomes a ground sign. That was sort of the differentiation.
Yeah, that, that, I, right.
Because ground sign was defined as four foot max to the bottom of the sign. So once you, once you get to four point one feet, you're now a pole sign.
Or what what we're going to be calling.
We're going to call it a pillar sign.
Pillar sign.
Sure.
I mean, I would agree, it can't have sign. It could certainly have landscaping or something underneath it.
Well, that's, so that's why it came up. I think this, I think this was discussed with Talbot's sign at the front. So if they want to put a raised bed underneath it.
They're required to have that.
They, they, well, you could put landscaping there. It doesn't have to be a raised bed, right? But they, you want from the top, from the dirt level to the bottom of the sign.
I think it should be the, the, the base, the, the level of the.
Ground level.
Ground level, not, not including any landscaping or.
So that's what I was, yeah, so what if they do a two-foot high bed? You have two feet left between the bottom of the sign and there. It almost looks like a ground sign. This one didn't come to fruition, but this was an application they received. They wanted to do an elevated bed. And it's saying in this code, more than four feet's required, but it doesn't necessarily say what to do with the landscaping.
I don't, I mean, oh.
I think that's a cheating, that's a cheating way to make your signs taller.
Right, but that's, I want to know if that's allowed. You, you're saying the.
Well, I don't know what's cheating, what's cheating about it? I mean, i- if we're allowing signs that tall anyway.
Well, true, but I guess the point is, is that it's, it's the differentiation of the type, right? So if, if you were doing a ground sign. At grade, right? Then you'd have up to four feet of clear between, from below the sign to the, the primary surrounding grade, right? If you now go in and you put in a two-foot planting bed. And say, well, I still want the four feet clear. Well, that's fine, but you've just changed the definition of the sign. You're now a pole sign. Because.
I, I think you're right, Matt, and you keep on saying one clarification that I'm not seeing here. Is the surrounding grade or um adjacent.
That's where I get, that's where I get lost in interpretation, what the more than four feet is supposed to be taken from. Cause that also dictates the square footage of the sign face for me, which is unclear.
Is there a maximum height on a ground sign?
Twelve feet.
Depends on the, yeah.
From where? Again, where is?
For a pole sign.
Well, so it says pole sign, but get in your mind that this is going to be a pillar sign, because you can't have a single pole sign anymore, so it's going to be.
No, but she was asking about the ground sign.
So.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Ground sign, the maximum, the maximum height is four feet in the MU, six feet in the M one.
Alright.
So, and that was, that was sort of intentional as well, right? So it, think about that for a second. The, the maximum height of a ground sign is four feet. So if you set the bottom of your sign at four feet, you have no sign.
Right, I mean, so if you try to use landscape to bolster it to get higher, it's automatically going to become a pillar sign anyway. Cause it'll be more than six feet tall at the end of it.
Depending on where you take the grade from, that's, that's where it doesn't say. I mean, I can take average grade of the, of the lot.
I mean, I think for maximum height, you definitely have to go from ground level.
You know, a type of reason it's mounted.
Landscaping.
Yeah, I just, I'm, I'm not, I'm having trouble seeing what, why there would be any.
I, I just want to know if if they.
Be done here. I mean, the worst thing that happens is somebody's got some landscaping underneath their sign. I mean. It's, the sign's not getting any taller overall than what they could.
Only because on a pillar sign, it says you have to have four feet, four feet. It has to be over four feet. If you take up.
But if we agree and we clarify that that four feet is from the ground.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Not, that's all I need is a clarification on whether we intended it to be the, the average grade of the property or the top of the landscaping. If they put it in a raised bed.
Tim, that you're, they're doing a, they're doing a pillar sign.
Correct.
And it stands, the, all the geometry is what you see here, but then they go in and they backfill and they build up this mounted thing. And suddenly the gap underneath it is less than four feet.
Correct, and this is requiring more than four feet, but that makes their sign, you know, you can adjust the total height, yes. But this is requiring more than four feet in the space beneath. I just want to know what the intent was, where you take the grade.
That I can talk to then. I mean, yes, the.
Yes.
We specifically talked about this from the perspective of trying to differentiate, to create a threshold. That differentiated when does a ground sign no longer a ground sign.
Right.
And so this four-foot number came in and it was always talked about. Empirically as a function of the surrounding grade. So whether we actually. Clarified what that measurement is from, I guess, is really the issue.
I mean, I, this one doesn't necessarily need a. I mean, I, this one doesn't necessarily need a code change. It just needs for me to know the intent of what was.
Right. That's what I, I, I think. And I think, my recollection is the same, that the intent was to treat that as the, um.
Here's a, here's something to, to think about. If, if I came in and I proposed a building to you, how would you evaluate the allowable height of that building?
I mean, I, I would take it from the grade of the lot, not the landscaping. I mean, yes, yes.
So then if I came in and I backfilled up against my house, two feet of, of fill, could I make my, my house taller?
No, but you also don't have a requirement that says you need more than four feet from the bottom of your window to grade.
True.
You know what I mean? If that was in there, then you, you'd have to keep four feet from the bottom of your windowsills to grade. That's dictating this one. So, yeah. I'll take average grade. That's a, that's all I needed was a clarification. And whatever the landscaping is, they just won't have four feet there. That's fine. So then back to illumination. Sorry, I interrupted the other one. We just needed to finish going through the other ones. Um, so projecting signs, obviously, internal, external only.
Suspended.
It's really, I think it's really just a question of, I think in the MU NMU, it's really just the ground sign that's the question. Because that's the only one that says that says external or internal. So that, that would seem to be mean, I interpret as clearly the intent was to allow channel lettering or ground signs. So the question, I think, is, do people still? First of all, you know, assuming that accurately captured the intent at the time, is that still the intent? Or, or is what the board is saying is, you know what, I don't really want channel lettering anywhere other than the M1 district on any sort of sign. Which obviously would create quite a few non-conforming signings in the village, but that's fine. You know, we can address those as as those businesses turn over, if that's the case.
It's about it becoming out of hand, right? And things starting to look cartoony. And then there's sometimes you can do a push-through letter that looks very nice and tasteful. Um, uh, and it's, it's not a gaudy sign at the end of the day. It's something that can be read easily at night. And, um, uh, what was, what was a dark, uh, letter during the day becomes a white letter at night, right? So, it, it, um, the old Stereo Advantage Building that Isco has on Union Road has an example of that sign, that type of sign. And that usually can be done very nice, and then the surrounding sign can look elegant and still fit in. If it becomes a, another one of these, you know, screaming red signs that just, um, is a gaudy sign, it's just not tasteful. Um, that's, that's a, what I wouldn't want to see. So.
Would, would the thing to do here, Chip, maybe to be, to put this directly to planning board discretion?
Yeah, so I actually was just going to say that, Matt. I mean, the other way to do that is we could sort of create, I mean, this gets a little slippery slope-ish, but, you know, because remember, one of the goals of this obviously was to try to make this more predictable and, you know, not have to have the planning board review so many sign applications. But, but there's no reason we could not say, look, we recognize that channel lettering or a person, you know, can be done well and it can be done poorly. So if you want to do that, I mean, it's essentially like a special use term. You've definitely got to come to the planning board and you've got to basically convince us that it's going to look good. Um, and, and, and so in other words, authorize the planning board to allow it, but by no means make it as of right. That's another option.
I think that's an okay option, because I mean, honestly, we've taken a bunch of them off the planning board's plate. We don't really have a lot of them come up anymore. I think that's, to me, that's okay. I mean, I'm, I'm not on the board, but.
You know, we just have to make sure we have, we put enough language in there to making it clear that the planning board has a discretion to say, you know, to really demand high, you know, ha- have the discretion to say this just isn't good enough. So if that's the crappy sign you're going to do, no, you can't do it. You're going to just have to do external illumination. But if you come to something that's really, really great. You know.
Colorado. Isn't that awesome?
So, yeah, I think that, I, I mean, I, I would think that the, the village board would go for that too. I think it, this is what the planning board is for, right? It's to, it's for those, those conditions that require that discretion. So I, I think that makes the most sense. We maybe we just put it in here, like, right in here, there's even the use of neon signs permitted for planning board review and approval. Maybe it becomes one of those extra statements that internally illuminated channel lettering may be permitted at, with planning board review and approval.
Right.
Maybe that other statement.
Yeah, and, and just add some, a- a- and we could even add some, you know, of, of the planning board determines of the exceptional quality, they, the planning board can authorize channel lettering or just any sort of internal illumination, if we wanted to really give flexibility.
I actually think that something like that is in here towards the beginning, that the planning board can take into account special needs of it. I think it's in the beginning under planning board. And honestly, I refer these ones to the planning board anyways, because it was hard for me to say, but the problem is, we still got stuck with the ambiguity.
Which is how we got Talbot's. And that's what I'm saying is, and because ambiguity is bad, ambiguity is really bad to have a zoning code, because it makes it almost impossible to enforce it. So, but if we make it clear that, no, these are not allowed typically, but, but, but we are going to give the planning board the discretion to approve them if they feel that it's a truly exceptional design, then that's not going to create the ambiguity problem that I was concerned about in that Talbot's plot.
Yeah.
I think that's the way.
Yeah. It's in, it's in, uh, well, it's page 10 of, for me. This is with respect to any sign application subject to its review, including appeals from a determination by a sign officer. The planning board may waive any requirements of this chapter upon a showing by the applicant that unique characteristics of his or her property render strict application with such requirements impractical, not such waiver is consistent with the overall intent of this chapter.
Yeah.
So it kind of gives you an out.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with you, Tim. I think that does it, as long as we, as long as the general rule here is no.
Fix it. Yes, I still think we need to fix it, but at least you wouldn't necessarily have to add a blurb if we just maybe clear this one up a little bit.
Right.
Okay, I mean, that, that sounds reasonable to me, if that sounds reasonable to everyone else.
Makes sense to me.
All right, so I will work with Chip then and say the planning board recommends that channel letters, internal or external, would be however you want to word this, subject to planning board review ultimately.
Yeah, would, 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 would generally, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll.
We can work on the wording.
I, I understand what the.
Let's work on it, and then we can always bring it back to the next meeting or the meeting after too, just to review the wording. Why don't we do that?
Yep.
Okay. If there's no more questions on that one, that's all I got for tonight, if anybody's got anything else.
I'm good. Time for dinner.
Every, everyone else good?
Yeah.
All right, well, since there's no other business, can we have, uh, someone make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thanks, Juan. Anyone second?
Second.
Thanks, Wally. All in favor?
Hi.
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 I do have some stuff on the agenda for next month, so be prepared for a meeting first Monday in March.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks, Tim.
No problem.
Thanks, Tim.
All right, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, all.
Thanks.
Night, everybody.
Good night.
Bye, Tim.
Night.
Night.
Hi, John Boy.